Meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. It is on October 8th of 2025. It is 6:03. Ms. Trevino, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Rosell Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
All right. Our invocation this evening is being given by Pastor Colby Cotton. Senior Pastor at First Baptist Church NBC. Good to see you.
We are New Zion now, but we are originally from First Baptist.
You're right. I knew that.
Yeah, we have changed. So, New Zion Baptist Church now. But I'm grateful to be here, so thank you for your time. So, let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for just being so awesome and so wonderful. God, you have created the heavens and the earth, and God, we just say thank you. God, we just ask that you would be with us, God, that you would bless us in this moment, in this setting. God, that you would guide every decision. God, that you would guide, God, everything that is mentioned on today. God, that your will will be done in this city, God, that your name will be glorified in this city. God, we thank you, God, for another opportunity, God, to serve, for that's what you've called us to do, God, to serve one another, and God, to lift each other up, God, to hold each other accountable. So, God, we thank you for what you're doing in this city. God, I ask for special blessing, God, over our leadership, over our mayor, over this council, God, over the people that are in this room under the sound of my voice, God, that you would bless us and keep us. Thank you for this city. Bless this city in the name of Jesus. God, we thank you and we praise you. In Jesus' name, amen. God bless you.
Thank you. Our next item is our pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. All right. Our citizen comment period is next, and the city council will hear citizen comments at regular meetings, work sessions, and workshops. If you wish to speak, there is a sign-up process. You may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again. You have three minutes to speak. Your timer will stop when you state your name. I do need you to state your name at the beginning of your comments. The timer is on the screen, and you'll start in the green bar. When you see that they're in the yellow part, you'll only have 20 seconds left, and there should be a ding to let people know about the 20 seconds. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up, and a bell will ring. If you hear a popping sound, please step back a little from the microphone. Mayor and council endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel. This is your warning. I'll ask you to leave the chambers. Our first, I'm going to just go through the whole list in order, which is going to be John Leonard, Sam Young, Eli Doyle, Hannah Garcia, Crispy Polanco, Maxfield Baker, and Jessica Kane. John Leonard, you are first.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is John Leonard. I'm here today to seek your support in upholding the United States Constitution and protecting the rights of the people, whether here in San Marcos or anywhere in our nation. I recognize that this council doesn't routinely take up federal constitutional issues. However, every member of this council is sworn to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, which brings us to the recent Supreme Court decision in the case of Kristi Noem versus Pedro Vasquez Perdomo. This decision has tremendous potential to harm individuals, particularly in cities like San Marcos, in direct contravention of the rights and protections guaranteed by our Constitution. The decision upheld the action of the Department of Homeland Security and, by extension, the United States to detain and question an individual's immigration status based solely on four factors: their apparent race or ethnicity, whether they spoke Spanish or English with an accent, the type of location where they were found, such as a car wash or a bus stop, and the type of job they appeared to work. That sounds like racial profiling to me, and racial profiling is not consistent with the Constitution's promise of equal treatment under the law. It sounds more like the words of Captain Renault in the classic movie Casablanca. "Round up the usual suspects," he ordered. In the current case, the government didn't dispute its reliance on the de facto profiling. Rather, in a cavalierly dismissive manner, Justice Brett Kavanaugh held that the plaintiffs did not have standing to legally contest the actions of the government. Why? Because, said Kavanaugh, it was unlikely that they would again be wronged in a similar way. That's complete nonsense. The factors leading to the violation of rights of these individuals, factors tied to birth, upbringing, and economic standing, are not going to change overnight if they ever change at all. In fact, the likelihood of harming these individuals again actually increases every day as anti-immigration efforts are supplemented by massively obscene budget increases and the support of the military. Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, in her dissenting opinion, pointed to a federal district court's earlier decision in this case. The court said that the four factors I mentioned alone or taken together could not satisfy the Fourth Amendment's requirement of, quote, "reasonable suspicion," end quote, of illegal immigration. The breathtaking flaw in the government's argument is its assertion that an individual's constitutional rights take a backseat to the level of emphasis the government may be placing on its program of the week.
20 seconds.
They do not. The Constitution is the supreme law of the land, not Kristi Noem's immigration quotas. That's why I denounce this decision, and that's why I ask you to join me in that denunciation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam Young.
Sam Young, basically speak about the budgeting process. The city of San Marcos has to be run like a business, and there is no deficit spending. Now, let's talk about why being physically responsible is so important for our city's budget. Everyone, council members and residents alike, deserves to know not just where our money is going, but also the reason behind those decisions. When our city officials keep the community in the loop, it builds real trust and helps make sure our budget priorities reflect what San Marcos truly needs. Looking back at the 2026 budget process, it's clear just how complicated these things can get. Hats off to Ms. Reyes and her awesome team for all their hard work. Handling all those detailed line items is no mean feat. Balancing citizens' desire for low taxes with the service our city needs is a tough act. I live in Kissing Tree, and there's plenty of talk about property values and property taxes, and I bet that's the case in every neighborhood in San Marcos. So, on September 2nd, you gave a unanimous thumbs up to a budget of just over $371 million. Then, when you revisited the budget on September 16th, the tax rate became the issue. You decided to set a lower tax rate, which meant a few wish list items had to be set aside for now. From what I saw, my opinion, maybe not everyone on the council was tuned in as they could have been during the planning phase. Thankfully, Ms. Reyes has stepped up to massage the dollars to maintain a balanced budget. As we look toward 2027, things are going to get even tighter according to projections. So, keeping the city finances healthy will matter even more than ever. San Marcos needs more revenue, but we all should agree that it shouldn't come from homeowners or small businesses. Bringing in bigger companies would mean more tax dollars for the city and more jobs for our neighbors. And don't worry, there's no reason for these businesses to be an environmentally sensitive area. We may need to look at annexing land that is a better fit for expansion. An enthusiastic economic development plan could do wonders for San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Eli Doyle. Eli Doyle here. Hannah Garcia is next.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Hannah Garcia, and I am here today speaking on behalf of the Austin Apartment Association and our members regarding Item 9, establishing a tenant's right to organize. Our association represents members across an 11-county region, including individual owners and property management companies who provide housing for about 70% of San Marcos residents, a responsibility they take very seriously. First, thank you for the opportunity to share our perspective during the development of this ordinance. Ultimately, a tenant's right to organize is already properly governed by the Texas Property Code, so by adopting a local ordinance, this would create unnecessary duplication of rental protections that are already required by state law. Furthermore, the lease agreement should continue to govern the rights and responsibilities of the two parties. More so, tonight, we are highlighting a significant concern that remains regarding the inclusion of property managers as a liable party. From both a legal and operational standpoint, a property manager defined to include an individual is problematic. The individual's role is to implement policies and maintain operations on behalf of the owner. Texas Local Government Code specifically states that employees of a landlord or company that manages a property is not personally responsible for criminal or civil penalties resulting from a violation. Additionally, Texas Property Code specifically provides that the landlord is the only party liable for violations. In addition to the conflict with state law, extending criminal penalty and liability to a person versus the contracted agent of the owner, aka an entity, could create significant challenges, disrupting the effective management of communities. On-site teams are focused on ensuring safety, security, and the quality of life for residents. Exposing them to personal liability for policies they do not control would have unintended consequences. The authority and decision-making power rests with the property owner to create or approve those policies. We believe this ordinance attempts to go beyond Texas law, which already affords tenants certain rights and protections against retaliation for participating in tenant organizing activities. If this does move forward, we urge the council to make key amendments to address the individual criminal liability that this draft ordinance establishes. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next baker is Crispy Polanco.
Request for vocal warning?
Yeah, it's a 20 sec. I said it, but I actually heard the ping come up afterwards, but we'll make sure.
Okay. So, Crispy Polanco, going to change things up a little bit. Not that I ever really prepare anything I ever say, but I just want to echo everything John Leonard said. I'm in complete agreement with him, and it just makes me think of other recent events surrounding the freedom of speech in this country, even here in San Marcos, with the termination of Dr. Alter from Texas State and the expulsion of a student. While, I guess, distasteful, the act of mocking the death of somebody else, it is still a matter of free speech and is not in any way grounds for expulsion. So, I would support the reinstatement of Dr. Alter and the reinstatement of that student. On other matters, next week, Friday, the 17th, there will be an event at the Activity Center for adults with disabilities. It's kind of like a high school dance kind of thing with a Halloween theme this month. I just want to, I mean, it's not my event to invite anybody to, but I would encourage council members to show up and engage with people with disabilities. I know there's the open meetings thing and the quorum thing, so it's not like all of you can show up, but like, maybe one of you just show up and just talk to some people and find out what's going on with people with disabilities in the community. That could just be cool, and that's not the only opportunity there is. The Activity Center has these events every other month. Yeah, that's all I had today. Bye.
Our next speaker is Maxfield Baker.
Yes, I am the Max, no, I'm Maxfield Baker. Yeah, so, first of all, I just got my passport. Shout out to Passport Services. It was super quick, super convenient, yeah, high fives all the way around. Love that team. I got it so quick. Second of all, the San Marcos Civics Club has a, first, they have a candidate questionnaire that's available. This is the second year that we've done this, and it asks questions about things like whether you would stand up to the state and federal government to defend the rights of San Marcos residents, in addition to a bunch of other things. So, that is posted on the San Marcos Civics Club social. You can find us on Facebook and Instagram. We also have a Linktree. You can access that at L-I-N-K-T-R dot E-E slash SM Civics Club. In addition to that, we have our Second Annual Candidate Forum, and that's going to be at Tantra Coffee House on Thursday, October the 16th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. We're going to have Place One go first, and then Place Two, and there's a lot of Place Two candidates, so we're going to have a lot more time for them. And, you know, unlike other candidate forums that you might have attended, whether that's with the chamber or the legal women voters, the San Marcos Civics Club Candidate Forum is a much more relaxed, and more importantly, much like our meetings, dialogue-driven forum, where you, as the audience members, are the ones asking the questions. It's not coming from us pre-curated. We don't know what folks are going to ask. Last year, as the mayor can attest, you know, there's a lot of conversation around Hell Ride and other really, you know, important local and current events that we discussed. And you also have the opportunity to ask follow-up questions, not to mention the bonus aspect of just kind of hanging out with them afterwards in a cool place like Tantra. So, again, that's going to be Thursday, October the 16th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., Tantra Coffee House. The last thing, obviously, I'm here to cheerlead and, again, applaud you all for your efforts so far and hope that it moves forward as kind of suggested and written, not only by our legal staff, but as recommended by the Austin Tenants Council and Texas Real Grand Legal Aid, the ordinance that we have in front of us today. I welcome the Austin Apartment Association to join us at our next Civics Club meeting. That's going to be on October the 27th. Those are the fourth Monday of every month at Tantra Coffee House, 6:30 to 8:30, real consistent with our times here, to help talk through any issues and concerns. You know, this is likely going to have to go through two readings, so we would hope that you all join us for that dialogue. You know, we understand that there might be concerns around liability, but the reality is, we have tenants that because of property managers serving as this unliable middleman in this system, issues are not getting taken care of. And, you know, the buck needs to drop at someone's feet when it comes to accountability, and I think that's what this ordinance does. I would disagree with the comment that this is already established in state law. As we saw in the review of the ordinance and the sign-up and the lead-up to all of this, this provides many more protections than state law currently does. Thank you.
And Jessica Kane, you're next. I do want to do another call-out for Eli Doyle, in case Eli Doyle is in the building. Make sure that, go ahead, and Eli Doyle will be last. Go ahead. You're at the microphone.
Well, thank you, Mayor Houston and city councilors. My name is Jessica Kane. When my family had the opportunity to move here to San Marcos in 2022, we were thrilled. We've wanted to live here for quite some time, and we're glad to finally see that desire come to fruition. Our children were already attending school here, and we were excited to be more grounded in this city that we love. At that time, there were few houses available and virtually none within our needs, so we had very little choice but to purchase a new home in Cottonwood Creek. While this wasn't our hope, we were excited that our first home would be brand-new, and we wouldn't have to worry about major repairs for quite some time. Our home took almost three more months to complete than expected for many reasons. In the intervening time, we continued to live mostly in thankfulness, this time for the fact that San Marcos has some pretty strict requirements for new homes. Failing our gas inspection pushed back our move-in day by two weeks, for example, but it's vastly preferable to our house catching fire or us being sick from gas leaks. I'd like to thank you for your work to make homes safe. Unfortunately, we're now three years into living in this house, and the foundation needs major repairs. D.R. Horton, our builder, is well aware that this is a problem. At least half of the 18 houses on our block have already had steel piers added to stabilize their foundation under the two-year D.R. Horton warranty. When we highlighted these issues indicating foundation problems, the builder refused to address the claim and instead made cosmetic cover-ups. Now, our warranty has passed, and to a third party that keeps rejecting our claims. Our foundation is cracking in half, and we cannot get the literal and figurative support that we need. We're not alone in this. The homes in our neighborhood are the kind of homes often referred to as starter homes. As you well know, 70% of San Marcos residents are renters. Many who are able to purchase a home like those in Cottonwood Creek are not purchasing a starter home, but a forever home. Yet those houses were built so poorly that they are sinking into the ground. My family has the means financially, legally, and time-wise to address these issues, to deal with the warranty company and the builder and all the things, including getting lawyers if we need to. Many do not. Those who are renting a home in this neighborhood have no control over the situation, and landlords may not have the means or the will to fix this issue either. D.R. Horton has a nationwide reputation for shoddily-built houses. We have likely only escaped a worse situation in San Marcos because of diligent efforts at the city level. However, this issue is placing unnecessary emotional and financial strain on us and our neighbors. I'm here representing some of those neighbors today, some of whom submitted a written comment, to ask you to prevent D.R. Horton from building any more homes in this city until they rectify their past mistakes and agree to build quality homes going forward for the city of San Marcos. Thank you.
Okay, and I understand I was missing someone on my list, so after Eli Doyle, if Yancy Ervalo is here, Yancy will be next. Eli Doyle, it's your turn.
My name is Eli Doyle. I've been a citizen of San Marcos for over 10 years. Today is two years and one day since the, not the beginning of the genocide in Palestine, but the ramping up, for sure, of this atrocity. And I think I just wanted to use my time here to have multiple moments of silence for every second. Over thousands of people have, for my citizen's comment, this three-minute period, each second represents multiples of thousands of people who have died. I just want to highlight that. I want a moment of silence for Malachi Williams and his family. So much atrocity and so much hate is happening, things at Texas State University that directly impact our community, things like developers who don't care about the human beings that are being forced to live in the buildings that they build. It's all connected. All the violence is connected. All the atrocity and the hatred is connected, and we do a disservice to ourselves and each other if we don't look at it. So, I'm eloquently using my time right now to look at it, to ask you to look at it with me, with each other, because it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable, and I can only do so much. And while y'all are constrained to certain limits of your own position, y'all can do So, I'm curious, why isn't more happening? Why isn't more happening?
Yancy Ervalo in the building? Is she coming? Okay.
I am so, so tired and disappointed and frustrated and scared of the situation of our lives right now as a whole. As Eli commented, today marks one year, two years and one day of ongoing genocide in Palestine funded by U.S. dollars, by our tax dollars. And I also struggle to understand why there's not more being done at all levels. This genocide has been going on for too long, and I don't usually read the news or watch the news, but today I found out that Ken Paxton issued a statement yesterday labeling Antifa and transgenderism as terrorist groups because Donald Trump said so, and that sets a really dangerous precedent for our government to label anyone as a terrorist based on what they say and what they don't like about what we say, right? As many have said already today, our free speech rights keep being violated. Perfect example, again, Texas State. Another example, back in May, when the community pushed for a ceasefire resolution and Greg Abbott struck it down. I am getting more and more worried every day of the state of our nation and how we keep, how we keep taking it. When are we going to say enough is enough collectively? American individualism is bringing us down as our government is more fascist by the day, more authoritarian, and yet we are still expected to continue our lives as normal. This cannot be our normal. Thank you.
And Ms. Trevino, that's now everyone correct? Okay, thank you. In that case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items 1 through 7 may be acted upon by one motion unless council member pulls one. I'll be pulling Item 7. Is there anything else to pull? Oh, my.
I need to share.
I would, too.
No, ma'am.
Yes, for postponement is requested. Okay, in that case, I will accept a motion to do Items 1 through 6. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Mr. Mendoza, and I see our lights flashing, so it looks like we're push-button voting tonight. Ms. Trevino will announce the results.
The motion passes 7 to 0.
All righty. So, we will move on to our public hearing. We will go back to Item 7 after the public hearing, which is our usual route to take.
Mayor, we don't have public hearings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I read the agenda for next week, and I went, I was remembering that. You're right, no public hearings, in which case, we're going to do Item 7 now.
Consider approval of Resolution 2025-194R, approving a sole-source contract with Tyler Technologies, sorry, Inc., for the purchase of your ticket, writer, support, and maintenance services in the estimated amount of $46,462.59 for one year and the option of up to four additional one-year renewals with a 5% increase each additional year for a total contract amount of $256,735.10 authorized city manager her designate to execute the contract and any renewals on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Council, we have been requested to postpone this. Staff is still working with the company on this, and my motion is to postpone it until such time that staff has everything laid out and can bring it back to us. I don't want to force that date. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Are there any questions? We'll vote.
The motion passes 7 to 0.
All righty, on to Item 8.
Consider approval of ordinance 2025-42 on the first of two readings, appointing Jeffrey Dewetherford as associate municipal court judge for the San Marcos Municipal Court of Record for a term of two years and declare an effective date.
Seeking a motion?
Motion to approve? Oh, I'll second it then.
I'll give that to Mr. Gonzalez with a second to Mr. Mendoza. Are there any questions? His resume and qualifications were in the packet, so we'll vote.
The motion passes 7 to 0.
Item 9.
Consider approval of ordinance 2025-43 on the first of two readings, amending the chapter 46 of the San Marcos City Code by
Amending the chapter forty-six of the San Marcos City Code by adding a new article four to formally recognize and codify tenants' rights to organize providing penalties for violation of the article. Providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of any conflicting provisions and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Garza, and questions, concerns, if we're ready to vote?
Uh, we'll motion amend.
No, I've already got a motion and a second. I'm looking to see if there's any questions.
No, I wanna amend the motion.
Did you have a question?
Well, I wanna amend the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I can't quite always follow you. So you have an amendment, did you wanna propose?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it.
Uh, so essentially, just to strike section 1.05. No, I'm sorry. Section forty-six point one-two-seven subsection B. Strike our property manager from it.
Can you repeat all of that, please? Yeah, can you give us the page number?
Well, it's the resolution.
Oh, it's in the packet, it's in the packet.
Yeah, but I'm on the interactive agenda, so I have the resolution by itself.
Oh, well. That's a, that's why I don't use that. What did you say?
Uh, it's section, sorry, I have it written down. Forty-six point one-two-seven subsection B. So it would read, it currently reads, "A landlord or property manager who violates or allows another to violate this article commits a misdemeanor punishable as provided by section 1.015." I'm proposing to strike.
I'm so sorry, can we repeat this section again?
Would you speak more slowly, please, sir? I'm trying to get to the page first.
Section forty-six point one-two-seven.
Got it.
Subsection B.
And your motion is to what?
To remove property manager from that part.
Forty-six, one-two-seven, B, remove property manager, is that it?
Correct.
We need to be clear, okay. Forty-six, one-two-seven, there's a motion.
I'll second that and I'll definitely explain why.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
B, property manager, and seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Uh, I'm gonna let Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez speak to that first, 'cause it's his motion.
So basically, it would, to the Austin Apartment Association's point, it would not criminalize the property manager for inacting what the landlord wants. But because of section forty-six point one-two-two-seven that says the property manager shall be considered the owner's authorized representative, whatever the property manager does, the landlord can still be issued a citation. And the citation can be issued to the property manager in the name of the landlord. So if the ordinance is violated, someone is still gonna be held criminally liable. It would just be the right party, the right party would be held liable instead of the property manager being held criminally liable for doing what they were told to do by the landlord is actually violating the ordinance.
So you're saying if the landlords tell them to do it, they're the ones that's responsible?
Yeah, the landlord's telling them to do something.
And not to involve the property manager, is that what you're saying?
Right.
I'm trying to understand what your, what your point is.
So yeah, so if the landlord directs their employee, the property manager, to violate our ordinance, the landlord should get the citation, not the property manager.
Okay, yeah, that's what I just said.
So the normal, or my gut reaction to that would be like, okay, but if the landlord is in another state, how are we gonna give the landlord the citation? But because of the other part of our ordinance, forty-six point one-two-seven, we can give the citation in the name of the landlord to the property manager. So we can physically hand it to the property manager on behalf of the landlord.
But it's addressed to the landlord?
Correct.
I'm gonna ask for a legal interpretation, and I wanna hear what Mr. Carr has to say. But I, I need to understand legally, first of all, what, what B actually is. Given some information we were just given. And then if, is what Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez is saying, is that, is that something we can legally do? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I guess I'm trying to understand, normally, you're gonna serve an agent of the corporation, whether it's the property manager, somebody's gonna get served for violation. So it's gonna be an agent of the entity will be served with the citation.
Does that person need to be in San Marcos in order to serve them? I'm, I'm looking at the property managers in San Marcos, landlord, I'm just gonna say is not in San Marcos.
Well, if the entity's doing business in San Marcos, then they can be, they can be served because they're doing business in the city, they're still liable.
But you're saying the entity, I'm looking for person. Doesn't someone have to be served in person?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But normally, if, if it's, if it's not somebody in person, you'd have to serve them to the, they're addressed with the Secretary of State or Control or wherever they're at.
Okay, so let me back up.
Their registered agent.
If we wanted to serve a landlord, how do we do that? Who's not in San Marcos?
Normally, it'll be the, the agent onsite, which is the property manager or other agent. If not, it's gonna be one of the corporate officers or their registered agent.
Let me ask Mr. Carr what's, what, what your thoughts are as to what we're actually doing. And thank you for that, Mr. Aguirre.
Yes, so the amendment takes the property manager out of the equation for getting the ticket. But in the definitions of property manager or agent, the second paragraph there just talks about, for the purposes of legal notice and process service, the property manager counts. So I think to the intent that the apartment association wanted to take them off the hook, your amendment works, 'cause it takes them out of the criminal part. The definition just says that we can serve them. 'Cause a lot of times, the owner's out of state, so.
So essentially, my amendment is just to remove the property manager from being personally liable and having a, essentially, debt to the city of San Marcos. 'Cause the, the citation is issued to the property manager and the landlord's like, oh, well, too bad the ticket's in your name, not mine. The property manager is an individual person is now charged with a misdemeanor.
Would that transfer the responsibility to that property manager as a person and not to the landlord if they were served?
Well, here, here's, here's the, if, if the, if the property manager is served, well, that.
As the property manager, not as the agent?
Right, that would just mean that the entity is responsible. But I guess another issue is, is there a situation where you have a, any agent? I guess you could have a situation where the agent themselves is the one interfering, right? Not necessarily the direction of the, the corporate entity, for example. You know, that, that's an issue, so, you know, we do have a definition of landlord or property manager, or, I'm sorry, property manager or agent. I would be inclined to still keep some provision in there for an agent to be responsible to the extent, even under the Texas Penal Code, there's provision that if, if no agent is specified for a corporation, this would be typical in code enforcement, where, say, we have to go into an apartment or a business and the ordinance doesn't say anything about who's responsible. Under the Texas Penal Code, it says that the, the agent acting on behalf of that entity can have liability even when an ordinance doesn't say that. So I, I understand the fix about the property manager, but even under the Texas Penal Code, in the right circumstance, any agent could be responsible personally.
Okay, so taking this out doesn't really change anything, that's for the Texas Penal Code?
I, I guess in that sense, it would have a minimal impact legally. I guess there's the question of whether, you know, you're trying to send a stronger message so people are on notice. But yes, I think under the Penal Code, I think that those individual representatives could still have liability.
And Mr. Carr, do you have anything to?
No, the only thing I would say is, if you wanted to make the amendment, it should be "or" property manager who needs to be stricken to make the sentence read right.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, did you have anything else, and then I'm gonna go to Mr. Mendoza.
Uh, not at this moment, mayor. I was just trying to see if the amendment has the votes. I don't know if we ever actually.
We haven't voted, we're still discussing it. Mr. Mendoza wants to. He seconded it and I'm gonna go to him.
No, I wait, I'm just listening.
Well, mayor, real quick, addressing this one, at least just one of the concerns that Mr. Aguirre brought up. If, in fact, 'cause he mentioned the scenario of the property manager isn't acting under the direction of the landlord, so they are the one actually violating. I would think that if the property manager violating is now causing the landlord to face criminal charges, then that's a self-correcting problem, 'cause the landlord will probably solve that issue, whether it's terminating the property manager or whatever. Or pay, or absorb the responsibility and pay the fine or face the consequences.
Ms. Mendoza?
If you own a building, I'm your property manager, I'm doing my own thing that you didn't necessarily tell me to do, that's a violation, and now you're getting cited for it. You're either gonna co-sign my actions by accepting the citation or fight the citation and then solve the problem, 'cause I'm obviously getting you into problems that you didn't tell me to.
Okay, Ms. Mendoza?
So I second this, just so we can discuss it, but in all honesty, I was actually okay with it until I had a meeting, and I'm not gonna name the complex, but it's somebody out near the high school who, for the past several months, has just been one of the worst actors we've ever had in the entire city. We sat down, we had a meeting with some of the staff, co-compliance, with some of the housing authority board members, and I sat in. This was the same location that had the shooting a few months ago as well. Those employees, whether it was manager or an assistant that was working there, were put under, and this is what shocked me, were put under strict instructions by their property manager and the owners themselves to not communicate with certain levels of the city. So we had our co-compliance going out there and the property manager saying, hey, you can't talk to me. Talk to somebody that's higher up or, you know, part of the corporation or the owners themselves, which was just one of the dumbest things I've seen out there. But that's, that was an example of how I saw the corporation passing the buck and putting these individuals who were working there, who were really just trying their best to piece it together, but their hands were so tied. And the representative of the organization was there, and this man was about just as cocky as I could come across, as, well, this is the way we've done it in other cities, this is the way we're gonna do it. And I explained to him that I was on council whenever we approved this particular project, and nobody said a single thing about that's how the organization was run. That's just horrendous working practices there. That's putting the blame on individuals who are just trying to, like I said, their job would try to pass on to see what they can get done. That was the only reason why, is because I would hate for somebody who's trying to work, like, in this situation, being held accountable to the same level as a property owner who is purposely doing this to damage any relationship they have with trying to get things taken care of. If there's a way to, to kind of find a medium ground on that one. But that, that's the only reason why I second this, because I had seen firsthand the weaponization that some of these corporations use to put their employees at the front face to take all the brunt, and it's ridiculous, so I, that, that's the reason why. But if legal says, I mean, I'm.
I do wanna point out one thing, though, there's, there could be scenarios. You know, like, this is true, for example, with police, in the military. And what do they always say? If, if an officer or superior gives you an order that is unlawful, right? You normally should not follow that order. So I, I, again, I don't know how often the situation would occur in this context where if it's unlawful, it's unlawful, right? And so, do you have a situation where property manager, one, is acting independently of the, the entity? And that could occur. But also, are they saying, well, I know this is violation of the ordinance, but I'm gonna do it anyways? So, you, you know, one thought I have is, that really could be true with any authorized agent of the landlord, not just the property manager. It could be one of the corporate officers. So, you know, another idea of it's not about singling out the property manager, it's just, or, or agent. You know, any agent, if you really think about it, of the entity. That would be inclusive of a property manager.
Would that also include, like, in this particular case, they sent one of their corporation representatives out here to speak to us? Would we be able to hold that individual accountable since they are representing?
If they were, if they were interfering, and of course, in that case, again, it'd be the same deal. Are they personally interfering, or are they doing it on behalf of the entity? But yeah, any, any authorized agent technically is, they're not supposed to be violating the ordinance, right?
Well, and let's, let's back up a couple of steps. I don't believe the situation out there was regarding a tenant's right to organize, was it?
Oh, no, absolutely.
Okay, so that's different.
Right, well, my concern was, so, right to organize. It was not just the shooting that happened, it was not enough parking spaces for the disabled.
What I'm saying is, it's not relevant to what's on our table today.
Well, it could be if they're trying to organize and then thi- this group says.
I'm asking what did happen? Was, was the problem, or was one of the problems, the tenants were keeping, were, were told or being kept from organizing?
I mean, what did you say that they were told not to talk to the city?
Well, yeah, they, they were told.
Let's not use "they," I, I wanna know who "they" is.
Residents were, residents were informed that they really had to go through certain management levels, and some of those people were not there because, you know, whatever day, they weren't available onsite. So then they came to co-compliance to complain, and then co-compliance tried to go work with individuals onsite.
And the complaint was about?
Uh, trash was being blocked.
Not being able to organize?
Well, yes, we could say that, because they, they were trying to complain, but they didn't know that they had the ability to, to organize. They, they were just kind of reaching out to us instead of themselves organizing, and we were getting roadblocked. And I fear that if we're even getting roadblocked, what happens when you have the citizens, the residents, trying to organize?
I feel like it's, like, related adjacently, yeah.
It, it's, could be, yes. Okay, so now my question to Mr. Carr is, in a case of, of what was, was on our table about the right to organize, who would be issuing the citation and what, what would be the thought process going on regarding the citation and to whom it would be given if it's determined that a citation should be issued?
Well, I'll use our general way we operate in how it pertains to this. We're gonna go and talk. If it gets to a citation, then somebody's really, really pushing to get a citation. Um, and whether that's whoever's being told to, you know, you shouldn't do it, and they're still doing it, might be them, according to what the attorney said. If it's the property owner, they're ultimately the one you go to. It's just like when you go to a rental house. You always wanna start with the renter, 'cause they're the ones that are there that are leaving the trash can out.
Right.
That are not mowing or whatever. So you start with them, and then when they just don't pay attention, then you go to the landlord. 'Cause to your point, then the landlord can start eviction proceedings and whatever. As long as everybody is working with us, that's our goal, is just to get it figured out, get some education, what you gotta do. Thankfully, in Austin, they've only had a handful of issues on this, and I think seven complaints and six of those were the same, same complex. So that's probably a ticket-worthy entity. But even some of our worst ones, this, the one Mr. Mendoza's talking about, that was strange that they're, they were instructing the employees not to cooperate with the city. And that just doesn't happen very often. We get it worked out before we get to that stick.
Okay, and that brings me to, one of the questions that I was gonna have is, is, and I think I asked this before. Assuming this passes on our next reading, in whatever form it passes, what is our notification plan to the apartment complexes?
Well, since I'm working on the apartment inspection program, we just called a whole list of all the apartments. I think there's two hundred and some total, but a lot of different individual apartments.
Right, right, small and large.
It'll be easy to send something out to each one of them.
Okay, so they, they, they will be notified upon passage, assuming it passes?
Right, and we'll put it on the webpage and stuff, but we'll do it personally, it'll be a mailer.
Yeah, yeah, putting it on the website is, is not enough. We need to make sure we send it to them, but that's good, 'cause you'll have updated information from the other work that you're doing. Okay, Ms. Rodriguez?
Uh, Mr. Carr, do you feel currently, as this ordinance is currently written, that you, as somebody who oversees code enforcement, are prohibited or, or we have removed your discretion from citing, if it gets to that case, the appropriate individual?
No.
Okay, thank you, that's my only question.
Okay, so we have an amendment on this one proposed by Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez and on page four fifty-three of your packet in section forty-six point one-two-seven, offense and penalty, and item. on page 453 of your packet in section 46.127, offense and penalty, and item B, to remove the words "or property manager who." And that's what we're going to be voting on now, and we will be voting with our push-button system.
The motion fails with five noes and two yeses.
Okay, so there were two yeses, all the rest noes. And so now, are there any other amendments? Any other comments? If not, we will vote on the main motion, which was not amended.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we have concluded item nine, and we're moving on to item 10. Ms. Trevino?
Number 10, consider approval of ordinance 2025-44, amending ordinance 2025-29, ordering a general and special election to be held on November 4, 2025, for the purpose of electing a city council member for place one, a city council member for place two, and to submit proposed amendments to the San Marcos City Charter to the voters by establishing early voting and election day polling places for this election, making provisions for conducting the election, providing for the approval of this ordinance as an emergency measure on only one reading, and provide an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a seconded by Mr. Scott. Any questions, concerns, thoughts?
I'd like to amend it for 30 years.
Mr. Gonzalez?
You need your microphone on.
I was just saying that I'd like to amend it where we can postpone it for the next three years.
Don't think we can legally do that, sir. I got a question.
I'm gonna violate the question.
Yeah.
And everybody else's.
So we'll go ahead, and we'll go ahead and vote.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All righty, on to item 11.
Discuss and consider appointments to fill vacancies on the following boards and commissions, and provide direction to staff, A, Ethics Review Commission, B, Main Street Board.
Okay, so we'll do Ethics Review Commission first, and...
I'll put Mr. Mark Murphy in.
And we have one, and that was an impressive application. Are there any other nominations?
Wait, are we talking about Mr. Murphy's application was?
For Ethics Review.
Did I get a different application? Because the one I got is pretty slim.
Yeah.
And I don't even see...
I'm thinking of somebody else. I'm sorry, I was thinking of someone else.
I was thinking of another one in the next group.
Can we ever, I don't know, just because I'm not familiar with the process, do, have y'all ever given the limited applications postponed a decision just to see if there's more interest?
We can. We can, I don't know how long this has been advertised, but we can always postpone it.
Because the reason I ask, Mayor, is because I really respected in the past your emphasis on getting people to really comprehensively express their interest, and for a commission like this, I would just like a little bit more information.
Yeah, I, I was wrong, I was thinking of another one.
Okay.
About the extensive information. So, can I take that as a motion to postpone, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we have a motion to postpone this one, and I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. We will vote and see if we all agree on the postponement.
Okay, the motion passes six to one.
Okay, Matthew is a no, and everybody else is a yes. All righty, then we will move on to Main Street where we have several applications. I thought they were all...
I was gonna nominate Isabel Thornton.
Okay.
And not just because she's a Boricua, but it helps.
And that, we, we do have a lot of information that Isabel has provided. So are there other nominations?
Oh, no, this is for the...
No, this is, this is, this is Main Street. But it's not our, it's not the council position.
Okay, okay.
It's a resident position. Or a, not a resident, but a regular member. Community member.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
And you're, you're the council member on Main Street, correct? Okay, so this person would be joining you. All right. Are there any other nominations? If not, we will vote. We have one for one, and the name is Isabel Thornton.
Yeah, I dig it, yeah.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so that is seven to zero, and we have concluded item 11, and we're moving on to item 12.
Consider the nomination of city manager, mayor, and two council members to serve on the Hays Cultural Economic Development Partnership Board of Directors and provide direction to staff.
And I'm going to make a motion to postpone because the annual meeting is coming up in a couple of weeks, and there is a bylaws change proposed that would make it city manager, mayor, a council member, and a staff member selected by the city manager, which would allow our economic development person to serve on this. So we, we need to see how that, if that passes at the board meeting, and then it, this will come back to us, and we'll know exactly what we're doing.
I'll second the postponement.
Would that, would that remove one of the council members?
Mm-hmm. It would replace one of the council members with a staff member.
And who recommended that?
The, the, I, I'm not on the administrative committee this year, so they have recommended it, but I will tell you this, we have dropped our investment in this board by 50%, and they're not suggesting dropping our people. I don't think any other entity has even two people for what it's worth.
Yeah, they also pay 50 cents, so, okay.
So, good, are you... I'm looking for, I'm making a formal motion to postpone until the first meeting in November. And Matthew has seconded it. And we'll, we're push-button voting.
Motion passes six to one.
Okay, so Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez votes no, and that concludes item 12, and we're up to item 13.
Hold discussion to consider restoring the participatory budgeting item that were effectively removed upon adoption of the tax rate with the goal of including them in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
And this was, okay, who, who put this on there? Okay, y'all take it away.
All right, I guess I'll go first. So first of all, I wanted to start by acknowledging Councilmember Garza, who really championed the whole participatory budgeting thing from the beginning, as well as Councilmember Mendoza first seconding it. But essentially, this is something that we all agreed to and was removed when we adopted the lower tax rate because it is no longer going to be funded in, by the general fund. But in talking to City Manager Reyes, it looks like she has identified some possible funds in one-time money that we can use to pay for it for her.
Can we back up a minute? Would someone define what this is? Because I will tell you that when we discussed this the first time, I had a completely different concept of what this is. So, Ms. Reyes?
That's an uncomfortable position to put her in.
No, just what, what it is, not, not the justification or anything, but, no, just defining what we're even talking about.
So what, what council had talked to me about during my evaluation was that you would like to see participatory budget, not only during my evaluation, but you also talked to us about that during your strategic priorities with visioning, and so there was consensus...
And we need to define what it is.
I'm gonna go there.
Thank you.
But we didn't have a very good understanding of what that actually looked like. Since that time, councilmembers Garza and Rodriguez gave us some contacts in Chicago to talk to who have done participatory budgeting, and so, and had some successful models. And so what that is, is that basically there's a certain pot of money that's identified that then the, the residents get to decide how that money is spent, and it's spent only on one-time things, infrastructure-type things, not things that staff has to, has to do on an ongoing basis. And then there's volunteerism, that's a part of it, because people have to volunteer to actually rank those proposals, to serve on committees, even block walk and things like that, to try to get people to participate as much as possible in making their voice be known and heard in regard to how those expenditures happen.
But this is only one block of money, because when I first saw this, I thought it was that thing that we asked everybody to...
No, ma'am.
Voist their concerns about the budget, and I just want to make sure that it's clear. That's not what we're talking about here.
It's a certain defined amount of money that would be defined, and the question Councilmember Gonzalez talked to me about when he was saying that he was contemplating doing this, he said, I want to bring this up, but where would we fund it? And I said, well, the thing that would be, where we could talk about with mayor and council is that, you know, we had the $1 million that we were setting aside for City Hall, which we decided not to do because we were going forward with the...
This year.
Correct, for the Central Property Acquisition, and we've already said that we weren't going to spend that whole amount of money. And so I said, anything that was left over from due diligence and all that, that could be considered by mayor and council if you were wanting to move forward with having a participatory budget model to be contemplated and considered, to be re-implemented and reignited within the budget process. So that was the, the funding source that, you know, that I had said that we could look at if council has an interest in wanting to pursue this further.
All right, I just, I wanted to just like name real quick, I appreciate the city staff and City Manager Reyes for meeting with some of the folks who I think have done a really good job doing participatory budget across the, this, the, oh my gosh, the nation. I was like, the state, not the state. But to the mayor's question, like, is this, like, the community giving an opinion on, like, a pot of money or the whole thing, I think that this is like the first step to create more pathways for more participatory engagement of the community. So I just wanted to name that, like, that this isn't like the participatory, and then period, like, it's over. I think it's like, participatory budgeting is an ongoing process, and I think this would be a good first step in that direction. And, yeah, and gives us time to, like, write down what's working, what's not working in terms of engagement, and how to really get information to our neighbors so that they understand better the entire budget process.
Yeah, and I'll add on to it, I think Mr. Young touched on it earlier when, when it first started, is much of this process, we know, which is why we amended the charter, is jargon-filled. It's hard to understand, it's hard to follow, it's long, people have a lot of opinions. And so the hope is, is that when people have meaningful ways to participate along the way, it prevents the last-minute changes that sort of are why we're here today, because it shows community support. And so the alderman that Ms. Garza and I put City Manager Reyes in touch with has already shown that the program and the way they're doing it there is effective. And that's a city of millions of people. And so I think when we had it in the initial budget that we all talked about, I think one of the benefits was, is that whoever was following the budget could see in the budget that this was important. I just hope that, given that we're pulling from one-time funds with the proposed allocation, which I know that you weren't making a policy decision, so I don't, you know, with, with where it was coming from, I would just hope that that doesn't signify that we, to Ms. Garza's point, that we're only interested in this one time, so.
I was just trying to get the definition, because I truly thought it was the other thing when I first saw, saw, not this, but the last time, and so I needed to make sure I was, I'm not against it, I just want to make sure we know exactly what we're doing.
I know, Mayor, and because I, I remember you, you expressed when we had a discussion during visioning, I think we had a short conversation about this, and that was one of the questions that you posed at that time. And so if you have that question as mayor, I imagine people who may be watching have that question. So, yeah, no, I appreciate the opportunity for, to allow us to, to sort of explain what it is.
Need to get, because I think they're both valuable, but they're different.
Right, yeah.
Although one may end up growing more into the other. And one clarification, you're talking about removal of the jargon? We, we didn't pass it yet, we were passing it on to the voters who will make a determination on the November 4th ballot, just to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, others? This is a direction, this isn't really exactly, I'm sorry, provide guidance to staff. So, Ms. Reyes, what do you need to hear from us?
If, if mayor and council would want to consider bringing that back, then we can bring that back as, as a recommended item that we would have at the next agenda for y'all to discuss if you want to put that back in the budget.
Well, the money's got to come from somewhere because we always have a balanced budget, so we're talking about...
It's the one-time money, as I mentioned, that would have been for City Hall, that $1 million instead that we were using for the acquisition of the Lee Street property, whatever would be left from that amount.
That's what I'm understanding.
Yes, yeah.
And, but, this will be, I hope maybe a bullet point on our vision workshop this next year so we can get ahead of the game and be planning for, for some of that. Are y'all good with, I think you would have done that anyway, but...
Just to make sure.
Just to make sure. Okay, so we're all in?
Yes.
And something will come back to us when y'all are ready?
Yes, and I, I appreciate our colleagues, Lorenzo and Matthew, I think, and I don't know if Max is still here, but, you know, we've been talking about this for a while, and Councilman Rodriguez really helped emphasize new perspectives during visioning. So it feels good that this seems like a, like a council-wide effort. It's good, yeah, I appreciate it.
Mayor, just to clarify, because I heard two things. I heard Ms. Reyes mention the next meeting, and then I heard you talk about when staff is ready, and I'm just wondering if the 21st is actually, because that agenda's about to be set, and if it's really going to be a later meeting.
It may not be the next agenda, but it'll be, it'll, it'll be when they're ready.
Okay, just to make sure we're all...
Yeah, I wouldn't go on with that next because that's, it's going to take some time, because we all have to remember, if we're talking about the next agenda, that's really only one week of preparation time, and really a little less than that, it's not two weeks, so. Okay. Have we concluded item 13? Ms. Reyes, you good? All right, then we're moving on to 14 at 7:09.
The city council will convene executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, A, Section 551.072, real property to deliberate regarding, one, the lease of city-owned property at 201 South OBJ Drive, and, two, the possible sale, lease, or exchange of land for the development of a new city hall; B, Section 551.074, personal matters to deliberate regarding matters related to the meet and confer agreements with the San Marcos Police Officers Association and Professional Firefighters Association; C, Section 551.087, economic development to deliberate regarding possible economic development incentives for Project Shirley Temple; D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the city of San Marcos versus Canyon Regional Water Authority, cause number 25-0782-CV-E in the 456th District Court, Guadalupe County, and a possible settlement.
Motion to go into executive session. Got one from Ms. Rodriguez and seconded by Mr. Scott. Let's vote. This is just to go into executive session.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we are going into executive session at 7:11. Council, if you would, go ahead and do your bio breaks. Next, executive session at 10 o'clock, and we are now to item 15.
Consider action by motion or provide direction to staff related to the city council's executive session deliberation under the following sections of the Texas Government Code during city council's work session or regular meeting, A, Section 551.072, real property to deliberate regarding, one, the lease of city-owned property at 201 South OBJ Drive, and, two, the possible sale, lease, or exchange of land for the development of a new city hall; B, Section 551.074, personal matters to deliberate regarding matters related to the meet and confer agreements with the San Marcos Police Officers Association and Professional Firefighters Association; C, Section 551.087, economic development to deliberate regarding possible economic development incentives for Project Shirley Temple; D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the city of San Marcos versus Canyon Regional Water Authority, cause number 25-0782-CV-E in the 456th District Court, Guadalupe County, and a possible settlement.
Okay, and we had those discussions, and for each of these, direction to staff was provided. We are now to the question and answer session of our program. We had no one signed up. I see no public here, so since we have nothing further on our agenda for the evening, I'm going to adjourn us at 10:03.